Thank you for coming. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Laws of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised in the Esperance Press issue of August 1st, 2012. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified and the requirements of posting of notices have been met.
The approval of... Mr. Moses, as part of the item number five, approval of organization meeting items, there is one addition to that. The addendum has been included on the back table, but let me read it aloud here. It will be B5E, and it reads, "Appointment of Attorney Resolved that the Comegna Law Group be appointed as General Counsel, Special Education Counsel, and Labor Counsel for the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education effective immediately based on their request for proposal submission. Further be it resolved that the board directs the administration to facilitate the transition of pending special education and labor matters from Schwartz, Simon &amp; Edelstein, and Kelso to the Comegna Law Group." And that is, I'm sorry, it's B6.
If you'll take a look at the agenda, five has different parts, A, B, C, D. We have a motion to take those five.
Our motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Ms. Tamasik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay. And now we go to B6, appointment of the attorneys. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Ms. Tamasik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay. Next up is minutes approval. And next up is report, superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to, we have a couple presentations, brief presentations, but I would like to first call up Mr. Moore to the podium. We're going to recognize, if you know, as you know, each year, the Freehold Regional High School District sponsors a teen driver safety banner contest, and the Board of Education members vote on that. This year's winner is a 10th grader from Freehold Township, Sarah Codusbodi, which is perfect because we're here at Township. So, Mr. Moore, you can take this away.
Thank you. I'm honored to present the winner. This is our sixth annual teen driver flag and banner contest. Each year, as you know, our district's teen driver safety program requires junior students and their parents to attend driver safety workshops in order for those students to be eligible for senior year parking spots. In addition to that workshop, we also host our annual flag and banner contest. Sophomores from around the district submit designs. Each school submits a finalist to the board, and the board, through a blind voting process, selects our annual winner. And at our last meeting during executive session, you selected, for the third year running, a Freehold Township submission. So, surveys and other needs assessments this year helped us to zero in on a need for programs to highlight the dangers of substance abuse. Dr. Nicole Hazel and Mrs. Jennifer Sharp worked with our substance abuse coordinators and with each school's teen driver safety coordinator to embed that theme into this year's workshop. That also became the theme for our flag and banner contest, the intersection of substance abuse and teen driver safety. So, it's fitting, of course, then, that we are here tonight. And please welcome and join me in congratulating Sarah Codusbodi of the Freehold Township class of 2015, and she's joined by her parents, Mark and Nina Codusbodi. We have a plaque to present to Sarah with her winning design, and we also have an enlarged version of her design here, which will also appear on our website tomorrow. Sarah earns a parking spot, guaranteed parking spot for her senior year as well. So, thank you.
All right. Sorry, I'm like Monty Hall tonight. Next up, I don't know if folks know, but May 12th to 18th is Special Education Week. We take that very seriously here at Freehold Regional High School District. There are a number of activities in each of our buildings throughout that week. We've asked a student from the Freehold Township Workplace Training Program to come out this evening, so I'd like to call Dr. Hazel up to begin that presentation.
Good evening. We would like to take a moment to recognize our special educators, paraprofessionals, for all their work in our department in recognition of Special Education Week. This week is being celebrated in all of our schools. Our student body will engage in activities and classroom lessons to celebrate diversity, respect, and awareness of each other's special talents. The Freehold Regional High School District has a number of special education programs, which are individualized to bring out the best in our students by engaging them in activities and instruction based on their strengths. Our teachers and paraprofessionals possess the skills, knowledge, and disposition to enable our students to reach their full potential. To help us celebrate this week, one of our students, Mr. Jack Anderson, is with us to share his experiences as a student in the district. Jack is here with his parents. I'd just like them to please stand. Mr. and Mrs. Anderson, we thank you for being here. Jack attended Coltsneck High School and was a member of the Navy Junior ROTC program. He presently attends the Workplace Training Program at Freehold Township High School. Jack's mother shared some insight for us about him. As you will see, his background has paved the way for his successful future. Jack Anderson was born in Army Hospital, and between the ages of two and 11, Jack lived first at the United States Military Academy at West Point, where his dad was a professor, and later at Fourth Mammoth, New Jersey, where his dad was Commandant of the United States Military Academy Preparatory School. When Jack was six, he attended elementary school in Howell and later Howell Middle School North. Being part of the Army family, Jack was familiar with the cadets of West Point and West Point Prep, and especially enjoyed attending various West Point sporting events. In middle school, Jack began to express his interest in Navy Junior ROTC in the Freehold Regional High School District. With the help of his parents and his middle school guidance counselor, Jack applied for and was accepted into the program at Coltsneck High School, where he completed his freshman through senior years. In addition to the Navy Junior ROTC, Jack has also played drums with the Coltsneck Cougars and was active in the Special Needs Recreational Program provided by the school. Jack has participated in area junior ROTC drill competitions and the district's marching band festival, as well as playing in the drum pit at the football games. One of Jack's proudest accomplishments has been to play the Star Spangled Banner on the piano to open the Coltsneck High School Special Needs Talent Show three years running. Jack began job training his junior year with the STEP program and had the opportunity to job sample and work at various businesses in the community. With a teacher and job coach, Jack had the opportunity to sample jobs in retail, park service, farmer's market, and other jobs in order to learn skills and gain world experience to help him set his future goals. In his senior year, Jack was accepted into the Freehold Regional High School District Workplace Training Program for his last year of high school. He is nearing graduation from the district in this program. This program has provided Jack with extensive job experience and training in various employment internships with the stated goal of preparation for permanent employment upon graduation. Jack took full advantage of the program. He was hired permanently upon graduation with Retro Fitness of Freehold. Retro Fitness in Freehold has been an ardent supporter of the STEP and the Workplace Training Program for about four years. I am sure that Jack has lots more to say about his experiences in the district and especially the workplace training at Freehold Township High School. I'd like to take a moment to recognize Mrs. Ide, who is the lead teacher in the program, and Kelly Fitzhenry, the supervisor of Freehold Township High School. Our program is two years in the making, and we are so proud of the accomplishments of our students in this program. I am now proud to introduce to you Mr. Jack Anderson to our community and the Board of Education.
My name is Jack Anderson. I am a student entered at Freehold Township High School. In the Workplace Training Work Program is my first year in the program. It is my last. I am 21 years old and graduating in June before I come into Township. I graduated from Coltsneck High School in the Navy Junior ROTC. I had a great time in that program. I know I wouldn't miss it. When I first started in the Workplace Training Program, I felt excited because I was looking forward to working at different job sites with new job coaches. I have learned many different job tasks, such as in this program, how to dust make shakes at Rancho. When I was at San Jose State's Fitness Center, I learned how to safely lift up weights and put them away in the right spot. Finally, at Pecco, I learned how to cling and feed betta fish. I also learned my new work skills, such as being responsible and taking initiative. I have improved on my communication skills, such as making eye contact to diaphragm others when they are talking and speaking clearly, and also improved on being independent in the workplace. I am excited to tell you that Rancho Fitness has offered me a job. I will continue to work there after I finish high school in June 2013. I want to say thank you for all the authorities I have had at Coltsneck High School, Freehold Township High School, and I'm grateful for the learning I have to be a good worker so I could get a job. Thank you for having me here. I'm going to miss the whole district and all my job coaches and teachers and friends, and I will come back to visit. Thank you.
Absolutely. Jack, we're grateful for students like you, so thank you. And, Jack, I've gained 15 pounds since I started this job. Can you get me a membership at Retro Fitness?
Mr. and Mrs. Anderson, if you can come up, and Jack, and Ms. Fitzhenry, Mrs. Ide. I'd also like to recognize Ms. Renee Davis, who's here this evening, our Director of Special Services, and our Administrative Supervisor, Ms. Velez, from the department.
A few more items, just to finish my report. We had on May 2nd, in keeping with the theme, and I said that, you know, we really embrace, for us at Freehold Regional High School District, I think we set ourselves apart as a school district in terms of the array of programs and opportunities that we offer our students. And all means all here. That's every student that comes to our door should have wonderful opportunities to maximize their own individual potential. It's not always about this student, that student. It's really about looking at your students and meeting their needs and providing them opportunities, and we do that here. We had the good fortune on May 2nd of having a Cinco de Mayo dance at Coltsneck High School for all of our special needs students, and we do that three times a year at different locations. And it's a real opportunity for socialization, and we bus the students from across the district who don't always have the opportunity to get out in that venue. And if you've ever watched it, it's a wonderfully powerful experience because our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our administrators in the Special Education Department, when you walk into that room, you know why you went into education, because you can feel it, you can see it, you see the smiles on the folks' faces, everybody's dancing, and I would encourage anyone to stop by those events because they're wonderful. Another item, tonight is the last night to vote for a young lady from Coltsneck High School who is a finalist in Warren Buffett's Grow Your Own Business Challenge. So, Alexis Polito, I believe, is a junior at Coltsneck High School. She came up with a business concept through Lana Nacchio's business class at Coltsneck High School, where she created, the concept was creating a sensor if children had fallen into the pool without a flotation device, and when they hit a certain depth in the pool or when it was over their head, the sensor would sound, and put together a YouTube video around it and submit it. And so, she's one of, I believe, eight finalists across the country at this point in time. And right now, that's online, and you can vote for who you think has done the best job. So, this is a shameless plug for one of our students who I think is well-deserving, although I don't have the website on me. But if you go to our homepage, there's a direct link to vote for her there. Thank you for the text, Nikell. Couple other items. We, and I've been up here, and it cuts both ways on these with a number of the rankings. You know, each year, schools are ranked and categorized and stratified in particular ways, but I do want to acknowledge that, you know, the Newsweek's top high schools in the nation, three of our six high schools were named to that list this year. Howell High School, Freehold Township High School, and Marlboro High School all made that list this year, so it's terrific recognition, and we're very proud. We have a couple things that are really in full swing at this time. We're in the spring, so that's concert season. You know, our music program here is phenomenal. Most of our concerts have occurred, but we do still have Howell's Concert, Coltsneck's Concert. I know Township and Borough, I was able to attend, Manal, but I missed. But really excellent culminating activities for our students that are involved in the arts. Had the unique opportunity to watch the Freehold Township Wind Ensemble perform at the Presbyterian Church on Main Street last week, and the acoustics in the venue were fantastic. So, you know, I think that we do some really amazing things for our students here, and it's nice to be a fly on the wall sometimes and watch those things unfold and see the talent that's evident throughout the district. Also had an opportunity to attend the Senior Senior Prom at Township, which is a terrific concept. The senior class of Freehold Township each year, in conjunction with the Recreation Department of Freehold Township, sponsors a prom for senior citizens in town. And the kids do the decorations and the dance and serve the food, and the senior communities come out, and they hit the dance floor hard. So, it's, but it's a wonderful community opportunity. Every single member, I think, of the Township Town Council was there, and it's a really vibrant example of a partnership between school and community. And it's great to see our students interact with senior citizens and cross those generational lines. Also had an opportunity to attend the International Festival at Howell High School last week, and I'd like to thank Dr. Norwich for pulling that off. It is an amazing event where students perform over the course of the day, and it's a nice opportunity for students that don't necessarily perform in formal settings. They may not be in a play or the musical, but they have a talent that they want to express, and it's a venue for them to express it in that manner. And they have that in conjunction with sort of food from across the world that the kids really prepare, and the kids run, they really do the bulk of the work there, and it's a terrific full-day event. I was caught stuffing my face, I think, when one newspaper reporter was there. Of course, I happened to have a mouthful, so. And we also, we're continuing our work to be prepared to launch our new teacher evaluation system on September 1st, and one of the activities that we took part in last week, which I think was beneficial for all of us, is that the principals went through a coaching exercise where we were separated into two groups and observed teachers who volunteered and, you know, bravely volunteered to have building principals, assistant superintendents, the superintendent in their room observing them in the new Marzano framework. And then, we spent a lot of time debriefing on what we saw and the evidence that we collected, and really just getting familiarized with the model. And it's going to be a lot of work to have everything ready for September 1st, but, you know, there are a number of folks in this district that are really working above and beyond to make sure that we are adequately prepared for that. And it's a humbling experience to also approach a different evaluation model and look at classroom teaching through a different lens, perhaps. And, you know, we all have to check our egos at the door in front of each other, see what we did see or didn't see, and I think it's a wonderful step in the right direction of being much more consistent as an administrative team in terms of teacher evaluation and keeping in the forefront of our minds that it's about teacher growth, you know. So, you know, I had a little handle, growth, not gotcha evaluations should not be gotcha. They should be helping folks improve their professional practice, which ultimately improves student outcomes, right? So, that's what we're focused on. And then, finally, we had a terrific experience with the Collaboration for Innovation Project, which we're a part of here in the district. And so, it's been an opportunity through the Panasonic Foundation and COSIN, which has brought together several districts from across the country to engage in professional dialogue around educational issues that are facing all of us, you know, using a virtual platform. And we participated in a multi-district Google Hangout session around the utilization of data in teacher evaluation. So, it was, in this case, it was specific to New Jersey, so it was Freehold Regional High School District, West Windsor, Plainsboro Public Schools, and Hillsborough Public Schools. And we all presented within the Google Hangout of how we utilize data in our observation practices, what our stumbling blocks have been in terms of implementing the new teacher evaluation system, some of the ways that we've overcome some of those stumbling blocks, and it was a wonderful learning experience for three districts that are all facing the same, three high-performing districts who are all facing the same difficulties to share best practices and to share ideas and to share thoughts around how we've done that. And it's something that we will be doing more of, and it's funded through, you know, through a grant from the Panasonic Foundation, so it's been a wonderful opportunity for Freehold Regional High School District to take part in. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Samson.
Chuck Samson.
That was a '60s moment for those of you who don't know me. Okay. Next, we have board reports, curriculum.
Yes, so we had a curriculum committee meeting on May 1st. If everyone remembers, when we were looking at the budget, one of the biggest items was home instruction. So, we talked a little bit about home instruction. Home instruction is for students who require home instruction either because of a medical reason or an administrative reason. The numbers are volatile, so at any given moment, you could have, say, 40 medical, 16 admin, or 70 medical and 10 admin. Given that, I asked the administrators who are on the curriculum committee what would be potential ways to decrease that line item, and they noted that the State Board of Ed regulations are currently under review, and those regulations require things like if a student is out for five days in a row, the fifth day, they require home instruction. So, we're gonna have to wait to see how those regulations are changed, and if they're changed before we figure out what kind of effect they can have on our budget. Our RLA is at capacity now, and that's obviously one of the biggest programs that draws students back from out-of-district placements and would essentially, could lower home instruction because they would be in school in our RLA. And also, a review of our disciplinary practices. So, if a student's out for five days, the fifth day is gonna cost us a lot more money, so look at other ways we could utilize that fifth day, whether it's in-school suspension or some other administrative practice. We talked about geocoding incoming learning center and academy students. This isn't as directly, you know, it doesn't inform as well as it did when we did it with the SAT scores, where we could see how our students were scoring depending on how far they were away from a school or from a place where you could provide SAT prep. But what we are tracking is of the students that we're accepting into our programs, what students are doing with that acceptance. Are they coming in and enrolling into our schools, or are they going into places like biotech or high-tech? So, we're gonna look at that pattern and review that more so that we can make sure that their number-one choice is going to be in the district. We went over templates of curriculum revision. They're bringing in special ed writers to help provide differentiation for some of the curriculum that we have. And then, the next meeting, we're gonna go over international baccalaureate and where we are in that process. Any questions?
Thank you, Mary Ann. Next, we have finance committee.
Thank you. Back in 1992, this district switched from oil to natural gas, and at that time, each oil tank was removed at... oil tank was removed at each school plus Pine Street. You may recall that we had an issue with the state DOE in that they didn't have any of the records with respect to Pine Street, and there was the suspicion that there might have been an oil leak, even though the tank was removed back in 1992 and there were no records. So we had to get involved with Brinkerhoff Environmental, and Brinkerhoff did borings and water testing, and we came out clean. And the site at Pine Street's perfectly healthy. However, a few weeks ago, we found out that now this same issue exists at each of the other schools, or sites, rather, in this district. So just to keep everybody abreast, we now have to go out at each of these high schools and do the same exact thing that we did at Pine Street because nobody kept any records back from 1992. The district didn't. The contractor, DT Allen Contracting Company, they were the firm responsible for this, and they claim they lost the records. So nobody kept any records, and this unfortunately has put us in this situation where we now have to go out and spend money to make sure that there's no bad environmental problems at these schools. So that needs to be done in the months ahead. We also had Pat LaGravina speak, new Director of Buildings and Grounds, and basically, he filled us in that he's called each municipality to introduce himself to the building officials in each town. So we wanna have good relationships with the Buildings Department in each town. So he's begun that process. He also talked about implementing staffing coverage, so there's more staffing by maintenance and grounds after 2:30. And he also reviewed a list of potential capital improvement projects down the road, and I think that one of the things that ultimately we're gonna have to spend money on is to increase the fiber into the buildings so eventually, once everyone brings their own device, there's gonna be enough capacity so everyone in the school could be on their iPad, iPhone, or whatever else, other device they are going to have with them. And then finally, with respect to ESIP, there's really not much to report as the background work is moving ahead. We are gonna be meeting with the BPU in about six to eight weeks to talk about that, so. That's it in a nutshell, Mr. President.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. Any questions? Seeing none, we come to my favorite part of the agenda, public participation. Yes?
Before we do, I just wanted to point out that an addendum has been left on the back table for the H section, and I also have one that was discussed earlier this evening. This'll be for K-11, resolved by the Board upon recommendation of the Superintendent to adopt and approve the settlement agreement and general release in the matter under Agency Reference Number 81-4/13. So a settlement agreement also, K-11.
All right. Public participation, we have first up Christopher Darso. Darso.
Sorry about that.
Good evening, Mr. Moses, Board of Education members, and Mr. Sampson. My name is Christopher Darso, and I'm the junior class president at Colts Neck High School and a student in the Law and Public Service Learning Center. On behalf of the junior class of 2014, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Simon on his forthcoming approval as a new principal for Colts Neck High School. I had the honor and privilege to represent the Colts Neck student body on the Principals' Interview Committee, where I witnessed Mr. Simon's track record as an educational leader, his outgoing personality, and most importantly, his passion for the students and community. Even though Mr. Land has been an exceptional principal who has set the bar very high for the students, I have no doubt that Mr. Simon will not only meet these expectations, but also surpass them. This is a bittersweet moment, as we wish Mr. Land great success with his retirement. His presence at Colts Neck High School will be sorely missed. Mr. Land left an indelible imprint on the students, our school, and this community. On a personal note, I enjoyed an outstanding relationship with Mr. Land, for which I am most grateful, and for this, we say thank you. As the class of 2014 becomes seniors, and we look forward to what the future holds in store for us, we are confident that Mr. Simon will be there to lead us in the right direction. We would also like to provide our full support and commitment to Mr. Simon as he joins our community and begins to implement his vision for our school. Again, congratulations to Mr. Simon on his forthcoming approval as the principal for Colts Neck High School, and best of luck to Mr. Land in his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Thanks, Chris.
Heshi, if I can, I just wanna tell Mr. Simon that you're gonna feel at home with Chris and your class because he's one of the 2,400 kids on the SAT.
Oh, God.
Next up, we have Diane Famalari. And there's a Sam Famalari. Is that, you wanna do a tag team?
No, that's a tag.
Separately? Separate's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Moses and Board of Ed and Mr. Sampson for letting me speak tonight. I'm here just to let you know that we would like to show our support for John Sharappa, who's been the girls varsity basketball coach at Freehold Township High School for 31 years. He has built this program up by running summer leagues, fall leagues, coming to watch our girls play in middle school. He, I'm on the Freehold Travel Basketball Board, and he comes every summer and represents Freehold Township High School girls' basketball by volunteering at our Freehold Travel Day. He's very involved with the community. And as a coach, he's one of those, he was a math teacher at Freehold Township High School for a long time, and so numbers are his thing. And when you're a basketball player, stats are very important. So he videotapes every game, and then he goes home and re-watches it and has stats that are current for each player, and, which is very helpful when you wanna continue your career in college, because those up-to-date stats are things that coaches ask for and need to know. And he provides that for them, as well as videotape that we can use to make highlight films and such like that for, you know, to help them with their college search and to get their exposure out there. So really, we're just here, 'cause he has to reapply for his job this year, and it's the first time he's had to do that in 31 years, and we just wanted to let everyone know that we support him and we really feel that he's the best person for everything that he does outside of just the basketball season. He basically puts 12 months into, you know, every year, puts 12 months of work into it. It's not just about the season, and we're, you know, our girls are lucky that they have somebody that puts that much effort and time into it. That's the only reason I wanted to come out here today and just let you know how we're feeling about that and what he really puts into it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Wagner?
I'm Victoria.
Oh. Tag team, okay.
My name is Victoria Wagner. I am a sophomore at Freehold Township High School. I play second year as a varsity player underneath John Sharappa. I started my last seven games as a freshman, and Sam and I both started as a sophomore on varsity. Coach Sharappa is kinda like a father to us. I'm gonna get really emotional, I'm sorry. Um, God. He's like a father to us. He treats us like his daughter. He's always there for us whenever we need him, and we're coming here to support him because we know that he will support us. Sorry. And he treats us like a daughter. He's always there for us, and if we ever needed a math tutor, I know I needed a math tutor because I'm horrible at math. I went from a 79 to a 94 in my second marking period, all because of his tutoring help. I know I train seven days a week usually, this is on addressing basketball attire. I just came from a training session. I know I have colleges asking for my stats, and he is one of the only coaches I know that will spend at least four hours after our game doing all of our stats. And if I ever needed a stat and I called him, he would literally drive to my house, which is 45 minutes away from him, and hand-deliver my stats, as well as videotapes. Any videotapes I need, he will hand them to me. He's just a really great guy, and we just wanna come here, say our support. We really appreciate everything that he does for us.
Yeah. On top of what she said, what my mom was saying, how he's like, besides he's just a basketball coach, he's well-known throughout the community. Like, I know me and Victoria, since we were in like fifth grade, have been going to his basketball camps like throughout the summer, and he's just been a huge impact on our like basketball, like game today. And I remember when we were, like last year, we were so excited that we had three more years with him being our coach, and we just look forward to the next few seasons, so thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna say that, you know, he really is lucky to have players like you, and I'm sure you don't know me, but I was in a similar position six years ago, and I just wanna say that I'm really proud of you guys coming up and saying how you feel, and I'm sure that Mrs. Sharappa knows, you know, what kind of players he has. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Can we have a motion to take the agenda in one shot?
Make that motion.
Oh, wait, wait. I made a mistake again. I wanna apologize. Only this time, now I know why I used the word Simon for Mr. Sampson. So this all comes around in a Freudian circle for me.
I get it. Disturbing. So on the agenda tonight, I just wanted to, you know, Dan's up for appointment. Mr. Simon, if you could stand up for a moment. So we went through, when Keith Land announced his retirement, we went through a multifaceted process to find a candidate. And prior to the process beginning, you know, Mr. Simon and I were having a conversation, and he said, you know, I think I have a potential candidate for that position. And I said, really? You know, he said, I think I might be a potential candidate for that position. You know, I'm really interested in Colts Neck High School and in applying for the position. And so, you know, I said, absolutely, and Dan went through the process, and we had a, there was a screening committee where we screened about 25 individuals first. We moved them on to, moved that down to about 12 candidates who went through a committee with six central office administrators. We then, I'm sorry, we cut that down to 12 that went to six central office administrators, and we cut that down to six who went to a building-based committee comprised of teaching staff, building administrators, parents, teachers, students. And then two finalists came back to me for a fourth round, and they had, along the way, they had to produce a writing sample, a timed writing sample. So we took the process very seriously, and then at the end of it, called all the references and whether it was a person who had worked, that Mr. Simon had worked for, or whether it was somebody who had worked under Mr. Simon, nothing but rave reviews about his passion for education, his collaborative style, his willingness to become part of whatever process you need done. And so, you know, I think that Mr. Simon is gonna be a terrific addition to the Freehold Regional High School District. I'm looking forward to integrating his integration with the other building principals and with the leadership team across the district, and I think we're lucky to have him, so thank you, Mr. Simon.
Okay. Next, can we have a motion to take the agenda in one shot?
A motion.
Thank you, Wayne.
Second.
We have numerous seconds.
Has a question?
A question, yes.
Yes. Under H1, Guidance Counselors 2013 Summer Employment, there's a list of Guidance Counselors there that we're paying. What exactly are we paying them for?
The Guidance Counselors, coming over the summer, they do a number of different things. A, they're working the master schedule for student conflicts, you know, as kids come in and out of a school over the course of a year, things happen over the summer. They're honoring transcript requests, they're working with students who are coming out of summer school and other placements. And what happens is students select their schedule, and then over the summer, a million things change in the building, and when you have, you know, 1,500 to 2,000 students who are requesting schedule changes over the summer and can't take a particular class for a particular reason, the Guidance Counselors, you know, work to sort all of that out. They're also taking in, you know, classified students that have changes to their 504s and their IEPs, and making sure that they're managed with the appropriate teachers. They're taking all the walk-in calls that just sort of happen in a guidance office over the course of a summer. You know, mom or dad are upset about something and come in and have a particular issue. Guidance is sort of the gateway to that in the building over the summer. We usually, our general practice for the past great number of years has been the approval of 27 days from 8 to 12, so they work from 8 to 12 so that they're available. They register new students who come in, they do all the grading update, the class ranks and the such over the summer. You know, they break all the test data that comes in over the summer, whether it's ACTs, the HESPA and such, so it's actually a pretty busy time over the summer, and you need to have the office manned because it's sort of a revolving door on the number of walk-ins on a daily basis. Correct. Correct. The counselors don't work over the summer. The supervisors also don't, only, they work two weeks over the summer, so generally, each guidance office divvies up a number of days, a standard number of days in the district over the summer, and they're divvied in different ways based on availability of counselors and who's available when to work, and also who's maybe doesn't have another job and is willing to work.
Okay. Please, before we vote on the agenda, don't forget we have addendum for H1, H2, and H3. Mr. Asatola?
Yes, on all.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes, on all.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Mazik?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have old business. Any old business? New business?
I'd just like to congratulate the Comecno More firm, welcome back permanently. We're glad to have you.
And Mark is a Giant fan as well. Okay. We have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor? So shall you say, so shall it be done. Thank you for coming.